Move infrastructure policy, we have a commitment to do X or Y. I mean, I get all that, but as I read the policy and I see five to six percent minimum, I asked her, I said, you know, what do some other cities and towns look like in terms of stabilization fund? And again, I just imagine that there has been a continued commitment to try to be
Yes, and it's successful.
Correct. But when I look at cities and some towns compared to like Newton, for example, I know their budget, they're a little bit more, a little bit more budget.
I think the AAA rating.
Eight point seven percent. Brockton, over eleven percent, same budget number. Lynn, eight point two percent. So where I understand, we're trying to continue to push ourselves and get better. I also would be interested in defining a goal, like a stretch goal, like ten percent of overall budget. So if you did some rough math, right, three hundred, ten percent of that's thirty million dollars. I've also mentioned that, with Mr. Powers, when I was on the phone with him and some of the rating analysts, what they told me is exactly what you said. There's a baseline where they'll look at your financial policy and your management policy, what's your stabilization, for example. Anything above six percent, that's actually going to improve your management component of the credit rating.
Right. The five to the six is the base. They want us at that in a current level. They openly encourage me in every call that I should be shooting twenty.
They said four to eight is adequate, eight to fifteen is strong. I quote those little words that they use. So I think personally, you know, again, I like to state my goals in black and white so I know where I'm heading. I don't think having a stated goal, you know, ten percent over time is an unrealistic deal.
No, we could adjust that higher once we have a certain level that we can maintain. We did hit it last year, June thirtieth, the year end, and we had to expend three point seven million on the deficit in the snow and ice.
You hit eleven, sorry.
Pardon me.
You hit ten percent of what we're.
No, we were at the five point six percent level at June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. That's the financial statements that the rating agency used to give us the double A plus table rating. So they were happy to see that. We have to work back up to that level to maintain the rating and keep going.
So would it be ours around the possibility of we put an amendment to the language to say a minimum level of five to six percent reserves of audited general fund revenue of the previous fiscal year with stated long term goal of ten percent?
Absolutely, I would be, I'd welcome that.
I would put that into the motion on page one of the financial policy. It was essentially where I got. Second, second. Just got them pretty straightforward.
Council King.
Yes.
Council Paul.
Yes.
Council Tim.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Hughes. Council Fox.
Yes.
Council Liam.
Yes.
Council Paul Mochi.
Yes.
Council Jim.
Yes.
Thank you. Again, I know it's something that we all, this is a policy document, so this essentially shapes our attitudes and our outlooks.
Publicly.
This stuff, so.
Right now, we're a very, very good school, and you just said we're going to reply by the, we're going all the way.
And again, I don't want to, I could geek out on this stuff all night, so I just want to be mindful and see if both councils can.
Well, since, again, if we're in the point of amendments and motions, I would like to make the motion that we strike under the debt service policy, capital improvement plan, the final, the last paragraph, which states that it shall also be the policy of the city, the minimum five percent of the operating budget dedicated to debt service. Capital improvements recognizing the strong need to maintain the financial stability and infrastructure in the city's most valuable physical assets on a non-coveting basis. And part of my reason for striking that is that, again, strikes me as in a budget process, kind of suggesting a certain level, almost carte blanche, whoever the mayor is at any given, given point. And we've already, I think it's very acceptable that they talk about, again, maintaining a certain level of debt in relation to the budget, because that necessarily, that that minimum should be shaped in what I think is in our, in our, in our annual budget. So I made a motion to strike that, the fourth paragraph.
Second. On the motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Where did this come from, for five seconds?
Up on the ceiling.
So, when the issue starts, start here.
From, I had a recommendation of between, I want to say nine to twelve different communities, from Cinder McNerney, from First Southwest, our banker, I guess Tilt Top Securities now, name change. And from all the clients she works with, she chaired the past policies and procedures, and she declined, and she had worked on things in town and gone to establish, because the rating agencies aren't just telling us to do this, they've been telling us the cities and towns, this is the way to go. As they get adopted, she's been creating a file for me, as well as Eric in finance office doing digging on its own. And we know who the triple A cities are, they're the one nut in a box. So Eric was feverishly researching all the AAA communities, Brooklyn, New York, several communities that do a great job. We're in a better financial position than some of them, but they were a little bit ahead of us as far as these recent policies. So we listen to that, we copy their policies, and that was one of the ones that we have as a, as a floor.
Okay. From the last, maybe there's capital improvement presented to us last year, what was the percentage there represented?
On the, on the debt plans?
Yeah.
It was right around five point four percent, and we're at five point six now.
So I think I'm just trying to understand why council officials, this is sort of like a carte blanche, because I see the need to have something in the financial policies that illustrates the need to replace assets over time. But I've yet to see, in my short tenure on this council, a listing of assets in their, their lives, as they, through each department, in terms of priority, and who maintains them? Do you?
We have a list of the assets, and we age them, and have to be pretty accurate in communicating. Usually do it, we audit times, we do it before a bunch of time, the department heads. Naturally, the larger the department heads, will have the most interaction as far as what we deal, that go out of service, or snow fighting equipment, or street sweetens, whatever it might be. The bigger they are, the more pieces of equipment they have to manage. So we have to update that each year.
So then what's the alternative? Is the alternative that we, we continue to go about our really daily spending, and you don't have an adopted policy that says we'll spend five percent a year? So you'll just come to us ad hoc?
I think it's, I think it's a balance. I think, I think we interview the department heads, I think we listen to their needs. I think when you have to deal with public safety officers who say they have fire engines that aren't going to last that long, you probably put those sort of life and death things, life and death things ahead of snow equipment.
Well, you, you highlight a very important point, because, I mean, I don't think this is a listening exercise, this is asset, these are assets, and they have lives, and you know how long they're going to live. So it's not just someone saying, I need this, get this, this is a kid in a toy store. I would, did some homework, I went and looked at Newton, for example. And this is a two hundred page capital improvement plan that they put together for details that highlight everything that you could ever want from each department, but at least it's listed in terms of priority, in terms of department, in terms of asset. And it shows over time how those assets will, will die and we need to replace them. So, you know, I understand the need for spending, you know, every year to have this five-year rolling capital improvement plan, but I'm just trying to understand what would be the commitment to providing factual details for the replacement of certain assets as we go along with the renewal of this yearly rolling improvement and committing to five percent every year?
I don't, I don't know how much manpower went behind that. Looked at something similar, at Newton?
Yeah.
Yeah. There were outside vendors, utilized, and contract price, I understand, was in six figures, to help them compile a lot of that information. We're doing it on our own right now, and some guys buy, buy out auditors only, and how we set things up and the procedures and questions we should ask. So if we were to put a lot more resources in, we could probably produce a similar document. If we're that far away from crucial information that's in that document, able to present it to you, talking about serial numbers and asset names and life and cost of equipment.
Well, I can understand, sort of, I mean, I have a hard time understanding that department heads wouldn't manage the most, you know, costly assets per department. Is that what you're saying? So that there's no.
No, I'm not criticizing the department heads, they're working with what they're working with.
Right.
Went through a recession not too long ago, lost a lot of people, we're kind of building up back to those levels where we were in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. We're also replacing assets as we go along the way. I think we could do a better job on the record keeping aspect of it. I don't know if we get the whole level of that two or three, two-inch document on, on the, the assets themselves and the pictures and so forth, but we can do a better job than we have as far as giving the detailed information.
Okay. Okay. I don't think that helps you make a decision, but, well, as we go forward, we're getting better. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. We're going to go to Council Finn, but just for the record, the regularly scheduled ordinance committee meeting at the indulgence of Madam Chairwoman has allowed us to continue this conversation, but it is quarter to seven. So just wanted, sort of, if you mind, we'll take as much time as we can, let's just try to go to the time to our council's fin, please.
Thank you, Council. And again, I, Mr. Chairman, again, I'm not proposing against planning or a capital plan at all. What I'm reacting to is something that I think has been a trend over the time that I've been here, which continues to somewhat limit the discretion of the council as it relates to the budget, per se. And again, as you guys noted, I think it's responsible on the part of all of us to keep our bonding to a certain specific limit. But this idea of opposing, you know, a minimum growth, so to speak, of, of five percent that's dedicated to our debt service, our debt service should be based on the reality of what we're funding, isn't it funding? That's a very simple point that we all want to try and debate. Again, it's there, it's important for the administration in the budget process to make their case. If you, if you start with a five percent, that somewhat limits our capacity in regards and limits our discretion of this body. And again, at the end of the day, taxpayers expect us to keep some eye on these matters. And so I, again, this is not a statement against having a capital plan, it's not above the value of having a healthy debt service from how it works. It's just that I'm reacting to having a minimum or seeing minimums of policy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
There is a, there is a motion on the floor, but Council Finn, to strike that section of the proposed financial policy, I don't know if anyone else has any further discussion on that motion, and Council Paul Mochi?
So I just want to clarify with the motion, I had some questions afterwards, but to clarify the motion, you want to just strip away that language?
So I strike the fourth paragraph of the debt service policy, capital improvement.
The minimum, like in the last page. Right.
The last policy.
Okay. So you're taking out the whole, the whole notion?
Just striking that specifically. I mean, to me, the first paragraph covers the issue, that they want to maintain a total outstanding debt service payment in relation to sixty seven point five percent. To me, that should be the policy. I do not think it's wise for this body to limit any of its discretion, as limited as it already is around specifically the budget. And to me, proposing a minimum as a policy and us approving a voting act, for all intents and purposes, in my mind, would limit our discretion.
Point taken. Thank you for clarifying that, I support the, the motion, I'll vote in favor of it. You know, we vote for policies up here all the time, whether or not they fall or not, is a whole other question. We also have a policy in the U R D P that we're going to push for affordable housing in the downtown. There's a policy with no teeth, so I have no problem taking, taking this out. And I share the concerns that Council Finn raised, is that we're tying the hands essentially of future councils who may sit in this, in this chamber. You know, we're, we're an administration, not this one, but perhaps another one gets up there and says, well, this is the policy, so, you know, this is what, this is what's always been discussed, this is the way we've done it, the way we talk about doing it, so this is what we're doing. So I'll support that, that motion.
Any further discussion, again, the motion on the floor is to strike that last paragraph on the final page above, that talks about the five percent minimum. Any further discussion on that before we go to roll? Council Devong?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So five percent minimum, is there any cap on the spending per year from a percentage point, or is there any cap on the top end of this, where it could be at?
The, we, it was recommended to us that we not exceed seven and a half percent as a ratio, as a percentage of our budget.
Okay. Just to clarify that, okay. For five to seven, seven point five percent.
Six to seven point five percent would be the acceptable range for community outside of our credit.
Is that what's happening at the double A, triple A plus rating?
That would be double A plus and aim by.
So just to get back a little bit on one question I was clarifying, what, in terms of what Council Finn was kind of talking about there, you kind of have to spend, they're kind of pushing us to spend. When you're talking about adopting these principles and ideologies on how to spend, of these communities or municipalities, do they still work out to be something near Quincy? Massachusetts, ninety four thousand people. How do they, how do they measure that? Based on communities and populations or?
Recommendation is probably the investment banker. In some cases, I don't think there was an exact tie to, you know, an industrialized city with ninety four thousand people and a certain percentage of income. Sometimes it just made sense as a policy that the banker thought would be adaptable to Quincy. There were other cities that with the reserve levels being closer to ten percent, in some cases in excess of ten percent, that were right in our range, which they were encouraging us to get up there with that, to be more like Brookline, to be more like New York, to put more in stabilization for a rainy day, to put more money aside to reach their levels. So I'll go next.
Is there a combination of any type of, I guess I could say, a combination of having this, like, it's hard to explain here, give me the notion, but based on what we're doing in the city right here today in Quincy, Massachusetts, is all this economic growth, do they factor that in as a factor?
Absolutely. They're looking, they're looking at Quincy as a part of the Great Boston region, they see the growth that we're experiencing, in particular residential values, this problem development that's coming more our way, they consider it as a region. They, they know specifically what the neighborhood city could do.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Paul.
Oh, is that Council? Council Hughes on the.
This one? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I just wanted to make a point regarding Council Finn's amendment and striking that paragraph, because I, I would be inclined to think that we will always carry five percent, a minimum of five percent debt service on our, on our operating budget. But I'm swayed by Council Paul Mochi, as well as Council Finn's argument, that it's not this particular administration, but future administrations and/or councils that we should be stewarding things for now. So, so, so I am swayed by that argument, even though I don't believe this to be necessarily, you know, detrimental or dangerous on, on its face, but, but thinking of it in those terms for a longer term and for a future, you know, folks yet to come that we don't know, and again, not to, obviously, nothing reflecting on this particular administration, but for things we don't know when we're down the road. I'll, I'm inclined and will be supporting Council Finn's motion to strike, so thank you.
Thank you, now, President. Any further discussion on the motion, folks? Okay. Please, hold on.
Council King.
Yes.
Council Paul.
Yes.
Council Tim.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Hughes.
Yes.
Council Fox.
Yes.
Council Liam.
Yes.
Council Paul Mochi. Jim.
Yes.
Right now.
Okay. Any, any further discussion on the financial policies of large, Council Paul Mochi?
Thank you, Chairman Crowell. I was digging through my desk here, because I could have sworn I remembered five percent being the, the number that we were given, not six to seven point five percent, the last time Cinder talked to us, or one of the times that Cinder talked to us. I found a piece of paper, and it's not entirely, it's mostly my notes, but I don't even know what it's from. The date on the paper that I referenced is May first, two thousand fourteen, and it was a discussion about long-term bond debt service, and it was a schedule at that point prepared by First Southwest. And it just has some comment, one of, one of the things that I noted in that discussion was that the minimum recommended was five percent. So, but now we're saying the minimum that we'd like to see in a policy is, well, we're saying we don't, but what's presented to us was six to seven and a half percent.
Right.
I feel as though it's kind of creeping up, honestly. It's, that number just keeps, keeps creeping up.
That number was specifically increased by the investment bankers to reflect higher costs in, in construction, in equipment, things we're bonding off, schools.
But so I just, I just want to fundamentally understand this, I'm not a numbers guy, as much as some of the other folks up here are, so maybe take it a little bit slower with me, but, so what we're saying here is that six to seven and a half percent is our debt service, is the percentage of our overall budget that we should be spending on debt service.
Correct. Those are benchmark figures that if we're in that range, we're helping.
Okay. So our debt service is what we pay for essentially loans to the city, bonds to the city.
Every.
Correct. So, bear with me here, so the people who are telling us we should increase the amount of money we're spending on our borrowing costs are the same investment bankers who would then be profiting from the increased borrowing?
Correct, but experts in their field.
Right, experts in the field, yeah. Yeah, Wall Street, known to. So, that was two thousand fourteen that we were talking about five percent. I believe we were talking about five percent last year.
I think five to six percent.
So it's, and now it's six to seven and a half percent?
Correct.
Okay. I mean, I have the same problem with that that has been expressed. And we're at five point six percent, which represents a far more measured approach to increasing our borrowing costs. I think, I was looking at this in two thousand fourteen, yeah, two thousand fourteen, this was including the track at that point and all the capital projects then, we're at five point five percent. So we've relatively maintained an even keel, and we're up by one tenth of a percent, which could be, you know, result to some refinancing and whatnot, but that's a level that I'm pretty comfortable with. The other, the other issue that, when you were talking, kind of struck me as not making sense, is that in order to get a higher rating for the city, bond rating for the city, we would need to borrow more. Is that essentially what you were saying when you're comparing us to like Newton and some other municipalities?
The conversation that was had with Cinder McNerney regarding the increase in the percentage, and it was her specific recommendation to increase, it was in light of all of the development that the city is expected to participate in, I guess is the right word, as part of the DIF district. And in light of us encouraging and working along with developers and growing this DIF district, we not tie our hands with a lower rating, five to six percent, that, that a more rural area or an area that's not going to have a DIF district with hopefully a lot going on in, wouldn't be that kind of flex.
That's betting on the future. That's betting on the future. That's saying, we're going to set up a policy where we borrow more money, we're going to borrow more money, take on more debt because we want to please the investment bankers, we're going to give us a better credit rating, and we're betting on the future of the downtown. Essential, right? I mean, it's a.
Essentially, they're saying, don't handcuff yourself with a lower number or what you think see as an acceptable ratio. Give yourself some room, you're, you're participating in a DIF district, a lot of development could require more investment by the city, don't cut yourself off, give yourself the room, and she recommended the six to seven and a half percent.
To go into the policy. So when you're saying give yourself, don't handcuff yourself to a lower amount, it's give yourself in the policy additional room, right?
Correct.
So if we don't have a policy where the only limit to the debt, which I'm certainly not advocating we go up to, is statutorily set.
That's correct, but the whole, one of the points of establishing the policy and having it publicly voted on and endorsed by the council is that you're setting it up for the city. So if changes in administration, you're looking to a policy that's been carried on by, by the city council voted, hopefully, two thousand seventeen. So in two thousand twenty-two, you're dealing with something that was set up five years ago, it's not subject to one finance director's thoughts automatically.
Which, which is interesting to me, because you're saying that's the benefit, and that's the exact reason why I voted against having that in the policy, because a much younger, better-looking city councillor, ten years from now, might not want to be handcuffed to that, that number. They might want to, they might want to go the other way. They might want to say, listen, we want to be, you know, less, less, less debt laden than we are today.
Hypothetically, I agree with you, and they have to vote on that, right, by votes.
Right. And they could always change the policy, or just ignore the policy, like we do in some of the instances, like the Royal House in the downtown.
Mark.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Mark, appreciate the presentation, appreciate the information.
Sure. The, the questions for Mr. Devong. Just kind of wondering something, Mr. Devong, how you wrote it down, and I think you covered it, so this six to seven and a half percent areas, if you will, is, or encompasses the DIF district as well?
As a total amount of debt, yes, they would look at everything, and in light of the development that's going on, we'd be not just in the DIF, but what happened previously. Cinder McNerney said you should not limit yourself to the five to six, you should increase that to seven and a half.
So we take into consideration, obviously, the new Sterling, which is on for the anticipated parking garage that will pay for any other infrastructure that will be responsible for in the downtown, the streetlight proposal potentially, and they're looking at, everything comes up under one umbrella, or a lap didgeridoo rate, right?
Correct. And we'll always be answerable to that, provide you with the detailed information to what the percentage comes out when they're reviewed.
And the analysts, third party professionals, they came up with that target range, six to seven and a half percent?
Yes, but based on other cities' actual policies that they provide, if it wasn't just an abstract conversation, that they actually set a new policy.
I almost wonder, like, when you authorize a ten million dollar bond, like, how much is that increase your percentage?
We can tell you that.
That would be interesting.
Whenever, whenever you're going to vote on authorization, we can tell you exactly to the, to the decimal point, what, what you do to the operation.
Six, seven and a half percent, so twenty percent sliding scale, right?
Those two numbers, correctly.
Yeah.
It seems, it seems to be your eyes. Council Finn, we may note twice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just one final note, we might address some of the concerns Council Paul Mochi has, but particularly now, as you're talking about having set benchmarks for these various funds, we're clearly at some point with free cash, you come back with appropriation to those funds, I would take, correct, Mr. Devong?
Correct.
So I think, given the fact that we've set benchmarks through, Mr. Chairman, to the auditor, but also through your role as finance chair, if we can set up a way to ascertain if we're meeting those percentages as appropriations come in, that in fact are actually consistent with the policies that they have in place, that could be reported to us.
You're saying that free cash time will be over twenty percent?
Correct, so that, so that the auditor can verify for us that those are meeting the benchmarks and what's at.
So, sorry, we may do a walk.
And then, one last thing I have a little concern is, is there language that's necessary at any of this point to make certain that this is, this is occurring at the time once free cash is established, correct? This isn't after, you're going to take a percentage of the remainders of this. This isn't after you're going to take a percentage of the remainder, so to speak, at your made discretionary appropriations that are coming in.
I think that just having a simple phrase, at the time of certification of free cash following policy will apply.
Thank you. I would motion that we add that language.
Could you just repeat one more time on something?
Mr. Kabbalah. During the top of my head, I think I've updated that. At the time of certification of free cash, the following policies will apply.
Did you do that right in the intro, from public?
Let's put that in form of motion.
Yes. That under policy purpose rules.
Any discussion on Counselor Finn's motion, which is to essentially put up a framework that distributes the free cash into these set accounts once the certification is what? Did I cover that correctly, Counselor?
Yes, thank you.
Any discussion on that? Steve John, Adam Clark, call the roll.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Forrest.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Forrest.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor, do you have any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any further discussion on the policies before us? Does anybody have any sort of takeaway as to what the market is seeing? You know, pretty comfortable and confident what's before us, obviously with the amendments that are on to it. That's a question. Everybody want to... A motion to approve the financial policy in this case, given the four of us with no amendments. Any further discussion on the motion?
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Forrest.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Counselor Forrest.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Calmucci.
No.
I know we have another accompanying item on this evening's finance committee agenda, but I also realize the time, and I don't want to rush you through it. So, that being said, can we adjourn the finance committee meeting? Counselor Forrest wants to go into ordnance, and then we'll bring you and your team back and mark if that is reasonable.
That's fine.
This is the school team.
Okay.
We'll bring the school team up, but I think we could... Thank you very much, Mark. Appreciate it. On this section of the committee during the September 10th. On this session of the finance committee meeting, back to order. Didn't realize it would be that brief, so appreciate everyone's hanging in there. Before us now, we have Council Order 2017-28, which will be a presentation tomorrow. Welcome, Walter. Always nice to see you.
Good to see you. Good evening, Chairman Kroll and members of the City Council and Finance Committee. It's a great pleasure for our team to be here this evening to give you an overview of the MSBA Accelerated Beer Project Boiler Replacements Adaptor Now in Merrymount, Beechwood, and Wallaceon Elementary Schools. You can answer any questions you may have regarding the appropriation of $3,542,015. The city team consists of myself, Gary Connick, David Scott, and Paul Hines. Our OPM, Onus Project Manager, is Hill International, and is led by Paul Callis. Our engineer is Architectural Engineering Inc., and is being led by Jonathan Breton, who was assigned commissioning agent for this project, and who is a consultant in Engineering Services of Norwood. These, the OPM, the engineer, and the commissioning agent were all assigned to the city by the MSBA. All fees for the commissioning agent covered by MSBA. Moving forward, I'd like to give you a brief history and summary of the project for Jonathan Mace's presentation. Last February, the City Council voted to authorize superintendent schools to submit to the MSBA a statement of interest, a form of feasibility study to replace boilers that are desperately and need a replacement at Adaptor Now, Merrymount, Beechwood, and Wallaceon. In May, the MSBA visited the four schools, and deemed that they were all candidates for boiler replacements and boiler upgrades. In August, the MSBA assigned the city an OPM and engineer to conduct a feasibility study for the boiler project at the four schools. In November, the MSBA officially accepted the project into the feasibility study, and on February 2017, the MSBA Board of Directors ordered to approve the project by the funding We're in hopes of getting a jumpstart on this project during April vacation, the official start of this project, the end of June, when school recesses for the summer vacation. A plan is to be substantially completed with this project by the end of September. In working September, that Princeless Digest, et cetera, would not interfere with classroom and school activity. It's a wonderful project for the city because it not only replaces boilers, but completely upgrades the entire boiler room and all related equipment within the space. The city will receive 66.12% reimbursement of eligible project costs from the MSBA. Thanks to the efforts of Mayor Coop, Quincy City Council, and Dr. E. Chris Farrel, the city has been able to participate in the MSBA Accelerated Beer Program over the past few years. Being part of that program, we have new windows and doors at Merrymount, Wallaston, Parker, and Winkin Handcock Elementary Schools, as well as North Quincy High School. Last summer, we installed a new roof at Merrymount Elementary School. In this summer, we will be installing new windows, doors, and roof at Beechwood Old Elementary School. It's been a great opportunity for the public buildings to participate in these projects and see the dramatic changes they have made in school buildings, kind of community. Jonathan Breton will give a PowerPoint presentation of the project.
Thank you. So my intent is just to give a brief overview of the scope for the proposed project, and then Paul Callis with Hill, OPM, is going to give a brief overview of the budget and the schedule of the project. So you're looking at a map here that shows Atherton, Beechwood, and Merrymount, and Wallaston, the four elementary schools as part of the project. So the intent is to replace the boilers at each of the four elementary schools as Walter said, there's additional work that is included with that. So at the end of the day, we're going to have a fully renovated mechanical room at each project. MSBA is planning to fund 66.12% of the eligible project asks. The project is currently being bid right now. It's open for bid to contractors. The intention being complete construction in October this year. And like I said, we're going to go through the scope, the budget, and schedule. So the first school is Atherton House. So we're just going to quickly talk about what we're doing in the boiler room. So what we're looking at here is two boilers. The one on the left was installed in 2007. The one on the right is the one that we're going to replace. This was installed in 1949, and it is cooled down to its last life. So the unit on the left is going to remain. The unit on the right is going to get replaced. We are also replacing an emergency generator in this room and completing additional emergency electrical system upgrades. We're going to be abating hazardous materials, providing a new combustion air system, and also a subsequent boiler work replacement, providing water heater and additional piping. This school is a little bit different from other schools in the land we are playing in. Atherton was an adult alternative. The reason being that we need to stay below a $500,000 threshold at this school, so there's not to trigger additional ADA requirements. So we've prepared several of our adult alternatives in order to obtain pricing on this scope without being required to include it in the project. So that adult alternative scope includes removal of wet paint, replacement of a sun pump, a new pipe trench, replacement of an air compressor, a new condensate pump for the steam system, and also a removal of a several thousand gallon and a boiler tank in the room adjacent to the boiler room. So moving on to Beechwood Old. If you're looking at a photo of existing boilers, these ones are a bit newer. They were installed in 1994. But with this system being a hot water system instead of a steam system, there's a large opportunity for energy savings. So our intent is to install high-efficiency gas-fired water. We also plan to replace the pumps with variable volume pumps, which will see additional energy savings over the existing setup. We're going to be installing new controllers for the new equipment, LED lighting, a new water heater that's going to use less energy than the existing. We're going to be replacing mechanical piping and doing some additional upgrades to improve functionality of the system. Moving on to Merrymount. The schools look more similar to Atherton. There was also a newer boiler installed in 2007. That's the one on the left here. The one on the right was installed in approximately 1950, like Atherton. It is not in good shape, so this is the one that we're going to replace. Again, the one on the left will remain. We're also planning to be hazardous materials at this school. That will be abated as part of this project in the mechanical room. New combustion air, new heat exchanger for the hot water heating system. The oil tank has been damaged and will also be removed as part of this project. New high-efficiency lighting, a new water heater. Piping will also be replaced. There's an air compressor for controls that is going to be replaced as part of this project. And similar to the other schools, there are some additional mechanical equipment and painting that's planned. So Merrymount is one of the two schools that before where we're required to do some ADA upgrades. I mentioned it briefly before at Atherton, but there's a dollar threshold where if you spend over that amount, you're required to upgrade the accessibility of the building for 521 CMR. So at this school in general, it was compliant, or some minor items that needed to be drawn into compliance. So the picture that you're looking at on the left is some minor modifications to the entrance. Parking lot is going to be, having some small area recreated, and then some modifications made for, and parking stuff. The plan that you're looking at on the right is of the bathrooms, your gymnasium. So repartitions, some modifications to plumbing fixtures, and a new drinking fountain being installed to apply accessibility upgrades. So this is the last boiler room, Wallaston. Again, this one is similar to Atherton and Merrymount. The boiler on the left was installed in 2007 and will remain. The boiler on the right was installed in 1949. It's in poor condition, will be replaced as part of this project. This school can say hazardous materials as well, which will be abated as part of this work. The combustion air system will be replaced. New high-efficiency LED lighting will be installed in the mechanical room. And similar to the other schools, we're also going to be replacing the water heater, piping, air compressor, and condensate tank. There is an additional scope to do a little bit of thinking in this. So like Merrymount, Wallaston, because of the dollar value being spent in the mechanical room, we're required to do some ADA upgrades. Wallaston committed a significantly more robust upgrade than Merrymount. So the bathrooms on the first floor and the gymnasium are being completely renovated. So the plan on the left is the existing floor plan. The plan on the right is the proposed floor plan. And so all fixtures, partitions, ceilings, floors, and most of the walls are being removed. So we're going to be completely installing new flooring, new ceilings, new partitions, new plumbing fixtures, new drinking fountain, and essentially rebuilding these two restrooms to apply required ADA upgrades that we need to do for this project. And we're going to pass it over to Paul Callis for Taylor National to give a brief project budget.
Thank you very much. Just briefly, the total project budget, which has been accepted and voted by the MSBA, the Board of Directors being for the entire project, all four schools, is $3,542,015. The MSBA will reimburse, pay up to $2,245,090. So it's roughly two-thirds of the project, and there are certain items that are not eligible for reimbursement, including the maintenance that takes place in the building, the placement of the removal of the oil tank, and other line items such as the UREs. But your prime targets of the cost used for this project is going to be reimbursable by the MSBA. And briefly, the schedule, as Walter had indicated, substantial completion of the boiler rooms up and running and operational before the heating season starts up again in late September, 2029, substantial completion. Heating season begins on October 15. And work that takes place outside of the environment of the boiler rooms, such as the ADA improvements, can be completed before school starts and substantial completion, which is always coming up. And if you have any other questions, we'll find answers.
This is actually a period presentation, sir. You want to leave? Okay. So what we're going to do now, we'll write out a severity where we recess the finance committee meeting. Madam President's going to open up the regular city council meeting, and then we will come back to the finance committee where we'll ask questions if they have. So at this point, I will call recess of the finance committee meeting at 7:28.